We'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to call this meeting in order and for the Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13, School Board Meeting, the agenda for Tuesday, September 10th, 2019. So I'd like to call meeting in order and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you're welcome. Laura, please roll call.
Mueller, here. Severson, here. Larkin, here. Lewis, here. Samurai, here. Palmer, here. And Superintendent Kathy Kelly, here.
Thank you, Laura. Our mission statement, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up would be the agenda approval and adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. Start with the approval of the agenda if I could get a motion, a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Lauren?
Second.
Second by Natty, any discussion? Any none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Announcement, September 12th, we had a school board, city council joint meeting scheduled. That will be not be happening, it will be rescheduled due to a scheduling conflict of a member of the city council. September 17th at 5:30 Tuesday, there'll be a work session here in the community room. September 24th at 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting, again here in the community room. October 8th, School Board Subcommittee on Policy at 5:00 and then 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting also on October 8th. Next up is correspondence, Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence this evening?
Mr. Chair and members, there's no correspondence at this time.
Okay, thank you. Citizen and employee representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time.
See anybody here, so we'll keep going. Next up would be the consent agenda, which includes the personnel report and the minutes of the August 13th and 27th school board meetings, and then the August 20th school board special call meeting. They get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Laura?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Second.
Paula? Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that motion carries. Reports from members of the board. Board members report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Lauren?
Yes, so I was, since our last meeting, I was able to catch the last half of the North Park groundbreaking ceremony, so that was excellent, lots of families in attendance, so that was great. I also have had the opportunity to attend three girls' swim meets, and I just wanted to comment, that team has grown. So it's really amazing to see the size of that team and how many girls are on the team, and it's a very young team, so lots of 7th and 8th graders, along with our 9th and 10th graders, and a couple 11th and 12th grader. But they are having a great season, and it was fun to watch them swim. That's it.
Thank you. Natty?
Yeah, I think, Lauren, I think we have met with convocation. I think convocation was also probably something you attended. I know you were there, so I'm trying to, I'm doing the Minnesota nice thing.
Thank you.
I think maybe, yeah, so we were able to all attend convocation, which was great. It's fun to see all the new teachers back. Thanks for the special happy birthday song, that was not terminally embarrassing, so I survived. And then we were able to attend the picnic, thanks to everybody who helped prepare that, and we were able to just celebrate the new year in style. That was pretty great. Let's see, I did also attend the North Park groundbreaking, and before that went to the open house at the high school, and was able to attend a couple of football games, and it was fun to see the first home game, the summertime pep band, the kids who responded to an email from their band teacher and just showed up and played, was pretty great. Been to some tennis matches, kind of similar to the swim team, girls team is very young, and it's fun to watch them. Had some conversations with community members, went to the chair meeting before this, and attended AMSD with Superintendent Kelly on Friday morning, learned some very interesting statistics and opinions of Minnesota voters when it comes to things revolving around the topic education, and it was included in your board packet. So actually, if you don't, haven't had a chance to read it, it's actually quite interesting. So, I know I'm a numbers nerd, but hey, you guys might like it too.
Paula?
Thank you. I also attended the convocation and picnic, and again, lovely day and a lovely time to meet everyone and see everyone back. Attended the Columbia Heights High School open house, the North Park groundbreaking, what an exciting day, I know there was a lot of energy, it was great to see so many teachers there too, they're very excited, so we're all very excited. And also attended a varsity volleyball match, and varsity and JV football games, and many conversations with a lot of parents in the community. That's it.
Thank you. Paula?
I attended the open house at the high school and had some conversations with parents and community members, and some communication with Superintendent Kelly.
Laura?
Well, I also attended the convocation. I wasn't able to attend the picnic, but I know that's always a good time, and I know a lot of work goes into that, so it's really great to see everybody so excited to start out the new year. And of course, attended the groundbreaking over at North Park, which is so wonderful to see. There were, there were no empty seats in the house, so to speak, lots of standing room, and it was great to see the kids throwing the shovel of dirt, which is always a good time. I also attended the open house over at Columbia Academy, and I attended a 916 board meeting, and I actually have two things that actually wanted to share out. One was an update on the one-year report for our educational mental health classroom that's over at Carner Blue. Now, this is mainly funded by a grant, and there's still actually, some of the funding that goes into this classroom is done through third-party billing, but then there's also a part that's also supported by a grant. Presently, there's still a fund in there, but that was not going to be renewed through the legislature next year, but we still have enough to get through the year, and we're probably going to continue this as well, because the results are so amazing. All of the students that were involved in the program showed some, the mental health reduction in symptoms of disruptive behavior, 71% of the students that participated showed a reduction, and 77% were more, were able to manage their symptoms a lot better. There were students that are able to return to their, to their home school. Two children that were, didn't have to get put into out-of-home placement, that was a savings of 154,560, and seven of these students also were able to avoid costly hospitalization, and the price tag on that hospitalization would have been 1.4 million dollars. So we really hope that we can get, get this funding going further, you know, on a more regular basis to make sure that we can continue with that. So I thought that was pretty awesome. And the other thing too, just on a side note, one thing that was added into the teachers' evaluations and the EAA evaluations over at 916 was a rubric for cultural competency. So I thought that was very interesting that that's actually being added into the evaluations. So, and I will leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. I also was at the convocation and picnic and hollered, just so you know, I let them know you were doing same or similar as us, we were just having more fun than you were probably at the time, so.
That day, that's true.
I attended the first high school home football game, the high school open house. I was at both the groundbreaking for the high school for the new band room, and then also for North Park's addition. Had several conversations with meetings with the superintendent and constituents, so. And that concludes my report. Next up would be the superintendent's report.
Well, Mr. Chair and members, as everybody mentioned, the welcome back and the start of school has happened since the last board meeting, and I want to thank everyone involved for getting us off to such a great start, and you're going to hear a little bit more about that in a few minutes. The North Park groundbreaking did take place on August 29th, and I really want to say a special thanks to the North Park staff and to some of the district staff that were involved, it really was an awesome event. I, of course, thought the students' performance under the direction of Mike Welsh and Ben Hanson stole the show, but Jeff, you were very good too, you know. And then I wanted to thank Cunningham Architects and Kraus Anderson for the celebratory mugs, and for the seat pods, and for the shuttles. And so, it's always nice when they provide those things for us to use, and it was fun watching the little ones dig in the dirt. We're grateful for the community at large for making the whole entire project possible. So, as Member Severson, Vice Chair Severson already mentioned, we did go to AMSD together, and we did hear the Morrison Leatherman report, it was pretty fascinating. And so, that is in the superintendent's update, as she mentioned, and if you get a chance just to go back, I think Don put it in color, so it's easier to read, so you might enjoy just looking at that. Multiple district directors, and Don Hoeyam and I attended the Northeast Bank Community picnic, and we really appreciate the support that the bank provides Columbia Heights Public Schools, and they had a picnic, and I think a few of the directors and possibly Don enjoyed the dilly bar, possibly, that went with it. I have been in contact with multiple members of the school board, attended the school board chair meeting prior to this one, and I want to thank everybody for their time. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, we'll be going with the opening of the school building updates. Hope you guys are all coming up together, how we're doing this, but come on up.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly, I think we are all set to share with you. This has been such an exciting start to the school year, and we're pleased to have this opportunity to come and share with you these first couple of days of the school year. So, we'll move on to the next one, thank you. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong and all succeed. And you'll hear in this presentation that all of our core values are really reflected already starting out the year with every core value integrated into our work. This is informational only, there are no governance questions, so you can just sit back and enjoy the presentation. We'll start off with our youngest scholars, so in our community ed early childhood program, ECFE program is starting next week. We are busy with doing early childhood screening and home visits and things like that at this time, but ECFE will start here in the family center next week. Pre-K 3 though, started on the first day, the first two days of school were orientations and then the regular schedule after that. We have a new creative curriculum that we're integrating, that we're utilizing in our pre-K 3 and pre-K 4 program, and complementing that the TS Gold Assessment. And then, I wanted to just mention that we are doing some of our ECFE classes off-site. We're doing our ECFE for EL learners, one of our two offerings for EL learners at Circle Terrace. We're also providing classes at Grand Central Flats for residents there, in addition to doing ECFE classes here at the family center, so we're really going out into the community to provide that programming. Thank you.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. At the high school, we did something unique this year, a little bit of a challenge, the weather was on our side, but we, we always start the year with a general assembly on the first day, and this year, kids were then brought outside to the stadium because we didn't have a facility as we're under construction right now. And we did the assembly in the morning with everybody Tuesday morning, and then Wednesday and Thursday, we had the 9th and 10th graders. On Friday, we had the 11th and 12th graders, and then finished the week with a pep fest. The reason why I bring that up is we have a large number of freshmen coming in, and during the assembly out in the stadium, all, all four, let's see, what is it, five presentations that we had, our students couldn't have been more well-behaved, and took pride in their school, and listened, and without incident, everybody walked out and came, came back in and went to learning without a hitch, and I just wanted to thank our staff and our students for that great start of the school year with those assemblies, because it is quite the endeavor to move large number of kids in and out of the building and not losing anybody. So we're excited about that. We're also excited of our pre-AP pilot program that we are implementing with our 9th grade students. We are excited that we are the first school in the state of Minnesota to be implementing that, and we're looking for great results with that. We are also excited that we are able to offer Arabic classes this year. We have a full-time teacher, and our students are very excited to be in that program. And then the last thing happening at the high school that everybody's really excited about is the redesign of our advisory program, and what we're doing is we're focusing and refocusing on our college and career readiness, as well as our ramp-up-to-readiness program with the University of Minnesota. And just an update, we, we've had our groundbreaking session, we're excited to see the footings in the back of the building, and today, I believe, some of our walls are going up in our band room, we're really excited to see about that. It's kind of nice to see the kids as they're having class down at that end peek out to see what's going on, so it's kind of, and with our PAC, we've had to lock all the doors because kids are really interested to see the movement of our construction, so we're really excited to see those, our growth and our updating our facilities, so we're excited at the high school.
Columbia Academy, we started our week with the teachers coming back and getting right to work, and one of the biggest things that we have been working on this year is how to work as a team, the collaborative work that we do, supported through the district. Our PLCs has been our driving force, and been very proud to see the work that's been going on with our teachers. As the week proceeded, many of you were there for our open house on Tuesday evening. It's a big night, as you know, the line was longer than Sweet Martha's Cookies line at the fair, and I have been talking with Principal Coolman about it's hard to be a school 172 days a year and a store one day a year, so we have lots to learn, and maybe some adjustments that we can make, but it was a very exciting night. It was followed by, whoops, I think, yeah, there, we had also something to celebrate, actually, a convocation that we celebrated again at Columbia Academy, of course, the program of distinction for Todd Bowman. It gave us a, something really great to celebrate, and we thank the district for recognizing that program. I think it was deservedly so, and our staff agreed, so it helped us get off to a great start. But what I think really I've seen over the last week now is the result of that work. And so, as you will see in our classrooms, there are messages being sent through pictures, through statements, and on the board here, you can't read it all, but those, all those little papers are the students' responses to sentences, our classrooms should be every day. Math is important because Miss Orkut can be most helpful when, or to me, and this will be my best year in math because, and they gave their responses. So it's been a time for students and teachers to really set goals and to make those connections. And so, it's fun at this time of year to go around. Other messages that we've seen that are prominent in our building, if you click again, Mr. Sasek, please, just this, again, the idea that you belong here, that we believe in you, and really trying to make that a key message for us. And one of the ways that we're saying that in the next picture, if you click again, is that you belong on the Columbia Academy team, and that's what we have been talking about, that you are part of the team. And so, I think, as you would expect in a middle school, the energy has been high, very positive, and about exactly what I would hope to have in a middle school, kids excited to be back at school, and excited, in the next slide, to be part of the team, and there they are. So, 1-2-3 Heights after their 20-19 win on Saturday morning, so, and that's what we are at Columbia Academy, is a team, so, thank you.
North Park, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, Chair Larkin, good evening. Well, we had a groundbreaking, which I know you all, you all are aware, and, you know, I was driving in today, and it made me think of Principal Willie Fort, and in his last year, when we were sitting in the crowd getting ready to come up here, just before we got, just before you called us up, Willie whispered in my ear, he said, you know, nobody ever stood in front, sat in front of the board and said, it's been a rough start. And I'm thinking about the logistical challenges that we've had this year. You know, Kathy always referred to how we do busing as the ballet of the buses, well, it's more like the ballet of the buses on the head of a pin this year. And all of the new challenges, with that in mind, I don't think our kids could have responded any better. It's been an incredibly heartening beginning, our kids have just been fabulous, and it gives energy to all of us. And thank you to the school board and to the community for giving this, giving us this shot of hope, and having seen a light at the end of the tunnel so that there'll be no more dancing buses, there'll just be parked buses in the very near future. And as a staff this year, and with our, with our students, we're working on creating stronger readers and engaged students, that is, that's our vision for the year. And the way that we're working on stronger readers are at our grade-level PLCs. We're focusing on reading, meeting once a week, we got those kicked, we're getting those kicked off this week. And as far as engaged students go, we're not calling it behavior or discipline or anything like that anymore, we're just talking about student engagement, because ultimately, that's what it is. And our leadership team has taken on the task of being a student engagement PLC, and then each member of the leadership team is leading a smaller PLC in each of our staff meetings, and what we're looking at is student engagement, and we started that first round of student engagement PLCs in our staff meeting this afternoon. But overall, there is a lot of energy and a lot of hope, and there might not be 900 kids in the building, but, but it feels like it, because a third of the building is shut down. And one of my favorite moments of the year so far is, if you see the picture on the left there, that's Zach, and Zach, Zach rides, rides in a wheelchair, and at the groundbreaking, his parents brought him in, and his teacher, you know, Mr. Bob, just walked up and says, you know, Zach, you're getting up, you're going to show, you're going to throw some dirt tonight, and so Zach's dad picked him up and brought him over there, and it was, I'm not sure a picture can catch, can give it justice, but it was, it was one of the cuter things of the evening. And right alongside that is pre-K students who hadn't set foot for a day in North Park yet throwing some dirt, so, you know, and really, I mean, those, that's, that's who, that's who we're building for, so, so thank you very much.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Principal Kelly. I couldn't be more hap, Superintendent, I couldn't be more happy to start off the year the way we did. We, as a staff, started redefining our climate and culture of our building, really looking at who are we and what do we want out of our school, and then building our expectations for all of us and our students around that. So we spent a good portion of Monday redefining that, and that has really carried over the first days of school and will continue to carry over throughout our year, but just, you know, opposite of North Park, our energy is nice and stable, it's really calm, it's under control, and our teachers are happy, they're excited, they're engaged in learning, so we're really happy with that. Along with Principal Burkus, we've worked on establishing some norms and working conditions so that we can bring in PLCs and make them very effective. So looking at what we need as individuals to work together, and then what do we need from our colleagues to come together. So that's been fantastic, and that's carrying through, and we're starting our PLC work this week, and we'll continue that. One of the big things that we've done, knowing that open house can be chaotic, and we are a storefront, we've redesigned it, and tried to make it more upbeat, but also provide more time for families in the classrooms, because that's our ultimate goal, is to get them there. So Assistant Principal Shirk had designed a roadmap for parents to follow, and they got a passport, so they had to get stamps at each of the stations, so we had them going through our supplies and uniforms, but also then making sure that we funnel them through to get our one-click done, and also our lunch forms, knowing how important that is. And then off to the classrooms, and then obviously afterwards, we had a very healthy treat, a little freezy, that was non-sugar, but it was good. But then also engaging our community, so looking from our PTO to different community organizations that we're partnering with, that we've established this year, to bring volunteers in to help us. So as you can see in these pictures, we have some members of St. Timothy's Church and New Heights Church coming with us to help distribute our uniforms, so really getting them in there, and then also planning on more integration of community members into our school. Our goal is to get more people in, more parents, more community members. And then also receiving a number of donations, so it's great that we're off to a great start.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. We started Welcome Back Week at Highland, with Monday being a really full day for us, so we started with a half-day building in-service on really all of the back-to-basics for staff, covered a lot of policies and procedures and safety. So we covered all of that in the morning, and then really had to switch gears because we started our work this year with Innocent Classroom Training. So we're off to a great start. We had our first three-hour session the Monday of Workshop Week, and then we'll continue that training. We'll have two extended staff meetings that will be two hours each, and then another three-hour sessions on building, or building in-service days. So our work with Innocent Classroom really focuses on developing relationships with each child, and really looking at it from all children come to us very innocent, and so things that we build upon with the children and their family, taking it at a very groundbreaking level. We also had a great open house, we made some procedural changes, so those of you who have been through Highland know that the gym used to be very chaotic with the signing up for conferences and signing up for, or with the internet forms. We did move that to the classrooms this year with extra support in the classrooms to really help families, especially as, you know, you may have a child at Highland and Columbia Academy and the high school, and they, the parents were able to sign up the students at one time, so we could help them look up student ID numbers and get all of the children signed up that day, so it was really successful as far as getting parents signed up for conferences and for the internet form. We also had the lunch forms, we continue to do that in the cafeteria, and we're, we're working on that, following up this week and next week with families that haven't returned it. Our main goal this year at Highland, really coming off of the work that we did, the directors and principals attended a training the last day of our administrative retreat on trauma-informed practices in school. And one of the key messages of that training was predictability, so it was predictability for our students as well as staff. We all know that everyone appreciates a predictable life, that you don't want to have something just come out of the blue, like you, you know, needed to get an oil change and you weren't anticipating it, you blow a tire, you're on the way to the board meeting. Things like that are difficult for adults, but when you think about children, especially children with trauma, they need predictability in their life. And so, one of the things that we're focusing on at Highland is how can we make school more predictable for students? So we talked a lot about that Workshop Week, about, well, we teach reading and math all year long, so why are we not teaching it on day one? Why are we not laying out the expectations of what the entire school year is going to look like when we first start? So that was really our mission of the first nine days of school, was to really establish strong procedures and expectations for our students, but also to have a very predictable start to the year with high rigorous academic instruction right away in classrooms.
Do we have any questions, Randy?
We've been, we've been, probably all of us have been fielding questions about busing, so how's that going?
You know, the beginning of the school year is always a difficult time with transportation, and especially with the new transportation company, learning new routes and so on, and I'll be honest, it's like, it doesn't feel all that different to me than the first week or two of school in years past. You know, you've got some late buses, you've got some bus stops being missed every now and then, and so on, and, you know, to my knowledge, the bus company's been responsive in, in trying to fix those problems, and I'll say, today, all of the buses were on time after school, which, on the six-day school, that's, that's not too bad, we got them out of North Park, which were kind of the linchpin, we're the first ones, and so, and it's really tough that first week of school, you want to make sure all the four-year-olds are exactly where they're supposed to be, and double and triple check, but we had our buses out at Tuesday. But we had our buses out at 2:27 today. So, I'm hoping that that is going to be habitual.
I think I would agree. And coming from another district last year, these are the same pains that we've had, that opening week is tough. And we know parents are upset, but I feel like this week, they are running on time. They're more consistent, and we're not feeling as many calls. So, if that's any indicator, it's getting better. And moving to a new company, there's going to be some bumps in the road.
Thanks.
Anybody else? All right, have a great year.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll see you again. Hope, apparently it's somebody's birthday tomorrow?
Principal DeWitt.
Oh, it's a cute thing.
Yes. Principal DeWitt's birthday is tomorrow, but since she's here tonight...
I believe Natty wants to start singing.
Oh, my gosh. But I think, just please come back up to the microphone, Principal DeWitt, because I'm...
Members of the Board, I'll please hit that little mute button on your...
So...
Ready? Softly. Ready? Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, Michelle. Happy birthday to you, and many more.
And I have a birthday twin in my school, so one of my teachers also is unfortunate to have a 9/11 birthday.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the PLC update, and...
I feel like I should move around chairs. Jump around.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm here today, and as you heard from a lot of the principals, talking about professional learning communities, to talk about PLCs in our district this school year. Our mission of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed, and really focusing in on the core values of community excellence and collaboration as we think about PLCs. This is an informational update, so I won't be coming back with any governance questions. So, what are PLCs? PLCs are really that collaborative teaming between teachers, where they have an opportunity to meet multiple times. Many schools, you heard them, share that they're meeting weekly, to come together and analyze data, and really look at student results and student data to determine instructional practices that are working best. And really, it's providing that professional learning for our teachers, and improving achievement and success for each and every student. And there are many reasons why we would focus on PLCs, and one of the big ones are, we really look at research and data behind it. And research and data shows, John Hattie did a big study of meta-analysis of many different research studies, and looked at the effects of PLCs and other parts or other things that you could do to affect student achievement. And what he found was a whole list of them that really could have a positive effect on student achievement, and found that any of the items that had an effect size of 0.4 or 4 tenths or greater, had a years or more student achievement growth. So, when we looked at the data, as many other school districts have as well, collective teacher efficacy, which really is PLCs, is number one. And the effect size for it is 1.57. So, when we think about the 0.4 as a year, 1.57 really can grow students if we're implementing it with fidelity. Our PLC journey, our professional learning community's journey, really started back in 2010 in Columbia Heights, where we provided professional development from 2010 all the way through last year to different schools and different teams. And last year, we really put a focus on looking at our structures of PLC and the protocols and expectations. After reviewing last school year, we really looked at what do we need? And we decided that we really need to ensure that everyone's on the same page with knowledge, so ensuring each and every staff member understands what PLCs are and the why behind it. Why would we do PLCs? How does it affect our students? And so, this school year, we have a renewed commitment to PLC implementation. Here's a look at some of our professional development. We really are aligning PLCs into all the work that we do in the district. We're aligning it into our professional development, into the focus of our different leadership teams, into meetings, as you heard the principals share as well, that really it is their focus as well. So, we started in August with professional development, and will continue throughout the year, because we know that with professional development, it can't be one and done. We really need to come back to it and check back in. So, we're working with Solution Tree and many other leaders in PLC and achievement and instruction to support our students and staff throughout the whole year. So, we began in August at our admin retreat, where directors and principals came together and really looked at PLCs, and decided what is our commitment to it? So, as teaching and learning, we came up with our commitment, as well as what our teachers commit to when they come each and every day, and what will principals and directors commit to this school year? And really looking at that alignment, that we all need to work together with that same focus, and with that strong focus, we can make a difference. So, we started our year, our Back to School Week with our licensed staff, and our first presentation was by Solution Tree. Brandon came and really kicked it off and had us talk about what do we want for our students? We really want that our students are learning, and that each and every student has that ability to succeed. So, we changed our thinking from teaching, what are we teaching, to what are the students learning? And this really is a recommitment. Many staff already have had some pieces of the training, but coming back together, and it was amazing. And Superintendent Kelly was there as well, but bringing the staff together, he really did a nice job of having us think about what we want in the school, and every teacher stood up when they wanted to ensure that every student had a high bar in our district, and we were helping them get there. We continued our learning with PLCs in August, with that keynote, and then back in the buildings, and really focused on the three big ideas of PLCs, to ensure that all students learn it at high levels, and this really is an equity piece. We want each and every student in our district to achieve. So, what are we doing to support that? That we're looking at as a collaborative effort, that one student is all of our students, so looking at each and every student together, and that we're focusing on the results. What is the data telling us? Our students are telling a story through the data, whether the instruction's working or not, so what are we doing to change it? And we continued with Solution Tree into the buildings and provided professional development, looking at the essential questions of PLCs. And this was a part where our teachers have had some professional development in the past, but really focusing in on especially questions three and four. So, what do we want our students to know, looking at the standards? What are those essential standards that they need when they leave each class? When they leave a sixth-grade social studies class, what are those things that each student in this class, we're going to agree on that they're going to leave with? Is that number one question. And then how will we know if our students are learning? What assessments are we giving, that all of us are giving? So, if we all are teaching sixth-grade social studies, we're giving the same assessment, so that we can come together and look at the data together. And then number three and four were big, and then we spent a lot of time in August on that, and will continue throughout the year. How will we respond when they're not learning? So, what changes are we going to make to our instruction or to our systems to support each student to get there? And then what if they already know it? What are we going to do? And then the last two questions really focus in on, as a school and a district, how are we going to increase our instructional competence, and how do we coordinate our efforts? So, how do we align all those pieces together? The other piece of PLCs that we want to ensure that we're monitoring them throughout the year. So, we came together and determined, the principals have met with their staff at the beginning of the year, and talked about how they're going to measure and monitor the fidelity of PLCs. Teaching and learning will continue to support principals and staff with implementation through professional development resources, time on district days to really dig into their curriculum and standards, and as well as us joining the PLCs, we want to ensure that we're supporting our staff with that, too. And then we're going to continue to monitor our data and PLCs in leadership meetings that we have, so the focus continues in everything that we do. So, we're really excited for all that this could bring to our students and staff, and the achievement and success that they could have with our aligned focus of PLCs. Any questions? Sorry, I think I took your spot.
What's that?
I took your spot. You always ask for questions.
No, that's good. What she said. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, information regarding the National School Board Association, the annual conference. It's coming up in April of 2020. It's going to be April 4th through April 6th. It'll be in Chicago. This is a budgeted-for conference, and it needs to come back for approval, so that they can start looking for hotels and things like that. The rotation is in your board packet there, but just letting you know that it's going to be coming up here, probably at our next school board meeting, for, as an action item. Any questions you've got?
Do we have any kind of an, excuse me, have an idea of a budget, and how much this is going to cost for our two board members, or? We're going to need to do that after we approve it? It depends on airfare, actually. So, the sooner we get it in, the better. We haven't, and because we're board more members, we get an early bird rate, and we get the membership rate. I always go for a rule of thumb that it's between $2,500 and $3,000, but it sometimes comes in less if people decide early, and we can get really affordable airfare and stuff. So, that's why we're asking for early. That's the rule of thumb, and it is budgeted.
Okay, yes. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, move on to our action items. First up is the Constitution Week resolution. Let me think, Xena's got the issues.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly. Each year, we come to the board asking to approve a resolution to name around the week of September 17th as Constitution Week, as September 17th is Constitution Day nationally. So, there is a resolution included in your packet. But before that, I would like to ask, or I would like to add some of the things and share with you what the teachers are planning for the Constitution Week this year. They will be using, so different students across the district in different grade levels, right? Interactive modules on the icivics.com webpage. Students will be given a series of scenarios, and then will be given the task of determining their constitutionality. They'll be reviewing the underlying principles of the Constitution, so including popular sovereignty, separation of powers, federalism, and limited government. They'll compare and contrast the Magna Carta. And then there's a classroom who is planning on, you know, reviewing, many of them are reviewing the preamble and learning about the preamble, but there is a class that's going to establish their own preamble for each class. So, "We, the people of Room 202, in order to form a more perfect classroom," and so on and so forth, the kids will be writing that. And then some of the younger kids will be, there's a preamble song from Schoolhouse Rock, of course, so they'll be utilizing that as well in their learning to focus on the Constitution. So, particularly our social studies teachers are really excited about celebrating this week. And so, with that, I'm here to seek your approval of a resolution naming September 16 through 20, 2019, as Constitution Week.
It's a resolution, I have to read it, so I'll start with a motion to move it forward, if I could, please.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Molly? If anybody's really interested, this is actually under the National Patriotic Observance under the United States Code, Title 36, Section 106 and 108. If you're looking for some reading time, but you're not going to get it, I'm not going to read that part here. I will read the resolution already approving September 16 through the 20th, 2019, as Constitution Week, whereas our founding fathers, in order to secure the blessing and liberty for themselves and their posterity, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States, and whereas it is important that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles contained in the Constitution in order to effectively support, preserve, and defend against all enemies, and whereas September 17th, 2019, marks the 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition of this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, whereas the independence guaranteed American citizens, whether by birth or naturalization, should be celebrated during Constitution Week, September 16th through the 20th, 2019, as designated by proclamation of the President of the United States of America in accordance of Public Law 915. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Columbia Heights Independent School District will hereby celebrate the week of September 16th through the 20th as Constitution. Questions, comments? None of the resolution, Laura, if you would please roll call.
Mueller?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Asamari?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Next up would be our Assurance of Compliance.
Chair Larkin, members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm here this evening seeking your approval to move forward with the Assurance of Compliance with state and federal law prohibiting discrimination. So, each year pursuant to Minnesota Rule 3535.2500, each school district annually submits to the Commissioner of Education a statement of compliance with state and federal laws prohibiting discrimination, and providing the designated supporting information to assure that statement. So, in conferring with the directors and our administrative team, our procedures are in place to follow the district policy and the laws, state and federal, and this is something that is reviewed each year with staff. I think Principal DeWitt alluded to that earlier, that that's how they started their Monday back to work. So, this is an annual action item brought to the school board for approval, and once approved, Superintendent Kelly will sign the Assurance of Compliance with state and federal laws, and then it will be submitted to the Commissioner of Education at the Department of Ed. So, tonight, I'm here seeking approval of the Assurance of Compliance with state and federal laws prohibiting discrimination, and I'm verifying that the district is indeed in compliance.
There's a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Natty?
Second.
Molly? Questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up would be board topics. Under board topics, the first one is just updated on a grievance. A subcommittee of the school board heard a Level III grievance for the Teachers Union on August 20th, 2019. The grievance involved the involuntary transfer of a teacher from Columbia Academy to Columbia Heights High School for the 2019-2020 school year. Article 5, Section 19, Subdivision 4 of the Teacher-Master Agreement allows the school district in its sole discretion to make involuntary transfers based on seniority, experience, and qualifications of the teachers affected in the best interest of the school district. School district administration is in the unique position to determine what is in the best interest of the school district regarding staffing decisions, as the master agreement implicitly recognizes. Therefore, the school board denied the Level III grievance. Anybody else have anything for board topics?
Chair Larkin, if nobody else does, I just have one thing, and that's that the Blue Books that you have found at your desk are really a resource provided by the Secretary of State, Steve Simon, and so they're for your use, and I'm sure MSBA would encourage your opening the plastic and taking a look at it. I already know the vice chair's going to do all the demographics, and John said he was bringing it home tonight, and he was going to get it as recliner and read the whole thing from cover to cover, so.
Absolutely.
Feel no pressure. So, that's, but it is from the state, so there you are, it's yours to keep.
Why was that funny?
It's only 700 pages.
Okay, it might take two minutes, sorry.
We, I do have one, home football game on Friday night, be fun. I think the pep band's going to be there again, based on an email I received. Should see the pep band there, and a fun night, hopefully the weather holds. And we'll be tailgating in the student lot again before the game beginning at 5 o'clock, so if you're interested, tailgating.
Anybody else? All right, hearing no further board topics, we'll adjourn the meeting at 7:51.